We are annually charged with the election of a president for next year. So I'm first going to take a roll call and then I'll do that election. And then depending on the outcome of the election, we will proceed. We'll proceed in any event. Roll call, Councilor Khan.
Present.
Councilor O'Brien is absent. Councilor Shan.
Present.
Councilor Tontar.
Present.
Councilor Vogel.
Present.
Councilor Z.
Present.
Councilor Devlin? Councilor Earls?
Present.
Councilor Agnew? Councilor Junta?
Present.
Councilor Connell?
Present.
Okay, so we have a quorum. Just make sure we've got everything we have. Councilor Devlin has notified me he's going to be here on or about 8 o'clock. So as we have done in the past, not to belabor the issue, I will go around the room in roll call fashion and it's as simple as you stating your name for your choice for President and City Council for 2019. Any questions before I proceed? Councilor Khan, your choice please.
Uh, Councilor Connell.
Councilor O'Brien for the record is still absent. Councilor Shan?
Councilor Connell.
Councilor Tontar?
Councilor Connell.
Councilor Vogel?
Um, Councilor Connell.
Councilor Z?
Barry Connell.
Councilor Devlin for the record is still absent. Councilor Earls?
Barry Connell.
Councilor Agnew?
Councilor Junta? Barry Connell.
Councilor Connell?
Hmm. Barry Connell.
Surprisingly, congratulations, Mr. President. Welcome to the Senate. Councilor Z?
Thank you. Good luck. Thank you. Matt Arroyo? On the fast lane.
Thank you.
Congratulations again.
Yeah, you bet.
Do I have to give a speech?
Yes.
It's okay.
It's okay.
You promised you wouldn't.
The only thing I will say is, and I will be brief.
He's going to give us a speech.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to serve you again. I hope that I've met with your expectations that you've had for my service in the past year. And I would like to solicit your feedback on the job that the Chair does in our meetings and in our committee work and elsewhere in the community. And toward that end, I'm going to solicit an email to all of you asking for the opportunity to have a meeting outside of City Hall, probably at the Senior Center as we did last year, to look at the way in which we've operated over the past year, to see ways that we might do things better. And particularly with regard to our rules and particularly with regard to the Charter. And we'll talk a little bit more about that as that date approaches. Let me just... We're about ready to go?
We are.
All rise, please. I invite you to join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Somewhat out of order, but I do hope that you'll join me in a moment of silence for two noteworthy individuals. Lloyd Dyson has passed away. Lloyd George Dyson was an architect, a sailor, a lover of art and music, an omnivorous master of knowledge, a keen conversationalist. And he worked on the restoration of the Jacob Perkins Engraving and Printing Plant for the Historic Society of Old Newbury, served as chairman of the Newbury Port Historic Society, and he was on the Design Review Committee in service to the Newbury Port Redevelopment Authority in years past when he's passed away. And I think we should all be aware too of the passing of James E. Buck Shan of Marion Junction, of West Alabama, survived by his wife Dorothy and daughters Dawn and Heather Shan. And I know that you all join us in a moment of silence. I respect those two individuals. I guess we should call to order. Do we have to do that again, or have we already done that?
Uh, we have already done that. I did that before the election.
Are there any late filed items?
There is one late file item. You'll see on your desk. It's a letter from L&amp;M Properties with respect to support of a zoning amendment.
Motion to waive the rules and accept the way file item.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of waiving the rules and admitting this item for consideration, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Public comment? None? None? Well, that's nice, a change.
Nice.
Well, some nights it's really been overwhelming. I think it's time for the mayor's comment. Mayor, welcome back.
Thank you. Good evening. And again, I got a little cold in Savannah in New Orleans, but I'll sort of highlight it's a long update. We haven't met or spoken in, you know, the mayor's update in a month. I will try and keep it pretty brief. Complete Streets, I think you are aware of where we are with that process, 12/13. We had our first meeting to sort of introduce the project and the... and Tech, our consultants, and they have been working on developing 15 or so projects. There will be a public meeting on the 31st and invite all residents to come, take a look at the streets that they're highlighting for a Complete Streets model. The landfill, we have been meeting with Blue Wave and they will be doing a public meeting tomorrow night in the auditorium or on the 15th. And Larry, Councilor Junta, will be... has, because it's in his word, has been involved in this. They came in to meet with us. It's basically turning a bad situation with the landfill, as you know, which should have been closed in '02. And despite two to three court filings, it's still in the hands of the Superior Court. We still haven't made any progress. This could be a way of actually generating some revenue, getting back taxes paid, as well as taking care of longstanding concom issues that have not been addressed. So there'll be more coming on that particular situation. Grafford List Station, I'm happy to report, is fully up and operational as of the 26th of December. And we will be decommissioning the death trap on Purchase Street in the next, over the probably next four to six weeks or so. But it's... we're working on doing a kind of a informal ribbon cutting there so that we can give the community a tour of this remarkable facility and its importance. Many of you attended the... on December 17th, the groundbreaking for the Minco property. This has been a long time coming. This is the property that Minco purchased from the MBTA to create 76 rental units, 25% would be affordable. And the Merrimack River Watershed Council, I submitted a letter of support for a grant that they're doing. And again, it's to research, quantify, see maybe economic activities on the river. We also are uniting on the CSO notification bill. And there's a lot more work happening in this area of CSOs. And I think it's probably easier that I fill you in on some of the other details in an email, but just know that we are really moving forward on uniting the river communities on this. One point is that there was, I did locate a federal bill from 2008 that was passed by the House but not the Senate and was a national CSO bill. And working with Markey, Senator Markey, Senator Warren, and Congress and Moulton's office to see if we could refile that and move that federal bill forward. 41(c)(1/2) update. Again, there's been a lot of misinformation that's starting to trickle out in the community. I want to say very clearly, this, whatever we decide to do with 41(c)(1/2), it needs a vote of the community. It will be on the ballot in November. The particular parameters, age, asset level, those kinds of things are things we're still looking at, but under no circumstances will this affect benefits to current veterans or people with disabilities. I'm going to say it one more time. It will not affect people who are current, veterans who are currently receiving benefits. It's a new program that will help those who don't receive veterans' benefits and disability benefits. Astoria Fire Station, we received seven bids for design of that project. There'll be a lot more coming on that. And we will put together the Fire Station Review Committee, which we started working with that group as we prepared these documents to put out to bid. Safe Roots to School, we've added, we've submitted a new grant to add to our existing Safe Roots to School project. The grants were due and we thought it would be in our, make sense to us to put Johnson Street in the mix at this point. It'd be wonderful if we do get it. We'll let you know. I think it's, again, it's a shovel-ready project, so we'll see what happens in the review of that grant proposal. Also wanted to let you know that we did receive a letter from the Mass Historic Commission who reviewed any adverse impacts to this project. And they, their letter indicated there was no adverse impact to High Street, our historic High Street, with the project that we're doing there. We can certainly make that letter available online. I think Jordy has it. Andy, if you would be so kind, I think people would like to see that since that's been kind of an issue there. I was asked to do a guest column in that argumentative column in the local on housing, took obviously pro-housing choice, and there's a link there to that article if you'd like to read it. Very pleased that the governor signed on January 3rd the Military Justice Bill. This was the bill that we were waiting for, for us to begin negotiations with DCAM to purchase Emergency Ops Building on Low Street across the middle school with the intent of moving youth services out of Brown School to this particular site and then begin to move forward with the disposition of the Brown School. So we have spoken to DCAM and they would like to begin the end of January working with us around that project. So we'll certainly have more information for you on timelines and next steps once we have that initial meeting with DCAM. I was at the governor's inauguration, but Chief of Stat Matt Coogan, Andy Port, Julie Godferson, Councilor Zied, Mass DOP, CZM, and DCR all came together to strategize on erosions on Plum Island, particularly reservation terrace. And it is very clear, under no circumstances are cement blocks going to be allowed to be used out there. They really can, from what DEP and the Conservation Commission and CZM are telling us, it will only exacerbate damage and erosion and scouring that can happen out there. So what we're going to do is regroup and schedule a meeting in early February with members at Plum Island and begin to strategize on what options we do have in terms of using the Charles Dread Sand and begin doing an annual dune replacement and how we can possibly fund that. We met with our new senator, Diana Disaglio, and Representative Jim Calcorce, and began to discuss priorities, which included the environmental bond bill, the CSO bill, school funding, as well as other project updates for the city. We are soliciting proposals and RFP for solar alternative on bill credits. This is similar to the project that we had with Two North, which has been bought by another company. But if you recall, the large solar project that we did on Rabbit Road in Salisbury. And so we're looking to create another solar project. That project gives the city $40,000 annually that we help to offset other utility costs. And we're looking for proposals to enhance our solar capacity at this point. Had the opportunity to attend the ribbon cutting of a new dental assisting program with Governor Baker and Lieutenant Governor Polito at Whittier Vocational Tech. They are continuing to expand their programs. And also was invited to the inauguration at the State House on January 3rd. Couple personnel updates. Our stormwater engineer has been hired. His name is Nicholas Federico. He started as an intern for us and really has developed a good skill set and we're looking forward to working with him on stormwater issues. And Scott McFarland has been promoted to general foreman. Ask you to please block off on your calendars February 6th for my annual State of the City. And it will be held at the Senior Center. On the back page, you'll see a picture of a fire, three alarm fire that occurred today, began this afternoon in a house on High Street on the same side as Kelly School, a couple houses down, one house down actually, in those unfortunately historic townhouses. There was construction renovations happening, apparently a soldering incident where the house caught fire. It hit the next house, which fortunately there was only a dog, but they rescued the dog. And the ceiling in the third house along the row was impacted. But I have to give kudos to our fire department because not only did they do an exemplary job extinguishing this fire and containing it, but they also have had the fire out on Plum Island on Saturday night, which was Newbury, and then assisted in mutual aid with the fire, Ray Pike, the harbor master out in Salisbury on Rings Island, their house. So Happy New Year, all. Looking forward to working with all of you in 2019. And questions?
Yeah, could I, on the Safe Roots to School, including Johnson, was there any consideration given to Topps Lane? I mean, it seems to me the issues there are sort of similar.
Probably. Andy, I don't have an answer to that.
We did, just in a quick summary, we did actually look at that. However, we have a much higher chance of getting ranked based on relationship to the middle school. So that's why Johnson Street was chosen rather than Topps because the program actually is more likely to be funding our efforts on Johnson Street than they would on Topps because it doesn't...
They see that more attached to the high school.
Yeah. Exactly. It may seem...
Middle school is closer to Topps than Johnson, right? But we can talk about it later.
Johnson's in worse shape too, though, the street.
There's no sidewalks.
Right.
Well, there's really no sidewalk on Topps.
It goes right along with the parking lot.
Well, we could have a Ward III and a Ward IV battle, okay? Which one?
I win.
You've already won.
The consensus was that Johnson had a higher, working with our consultant, had a higher probability, I guess, from what I understand.
I believe Councilor Junta has...
Sure. Yeah, no, just a quick mention there. Yeah, if we were going to put a sideways, a sidewalk to a school, I think we should always go to Hale Street first.
Okay.
Okay, so moving past that.
Freeway arm wrestle.
Just on the fire station, at some point, can I just get briefed on it? It is in my ward and I don't, I haven't had any briefings on it, so I really don't know what's happening. I'm not on the ad hoc committee.
Would you like to be?
Sure.
We'd love to have you on the ad hoc committee. I mean, it was just sort of preliminary discussions about what the, you know, meeting to discuss how we put together the request for proposals. I mean, in terms of all the problems with that existing fire station. So that really was the focus of those. I think we had two or three meetings and now we'll put together this full team who will review proposals and would love to have you sit on that committee going forward, Councilor, absolutely.
That's great. Yeah, because not only is it in my ward, it's in my neighborhood. So there's a lot of questions coming at me. I'm like, I don't know. One other, just small point. Right now, we continue to call it the Astoria Fire Station, but it is the John F. Cutter Jr. Fire Station. So we want to make sure that we continue to honor that former fire chief, I believe. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Further questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's proceed to the consent agenda. Richard, you're up.
That consists this evening, Mr. President, of the approval for the minutes for December 10th. There are no transfers. There are two communications. Communication 103, which is the WAC, MS WAC, to be held on April 27th. That's to go to public safety. And 104 is Seacoast Taxi Application by Richard Ullit for this year, 2019. That's to go to license and permits. There are three reappointments. Appointment 76, Suzanne Marzy Cameron, 17 Oakland Street, to the Affordable Housing Trust until 1-1-2021. Appointment 77 is David Zink, 6 Laurel Road, as an electrical inspector until 1-1-2020. Appointment 78, Justin Dutcher, 7 Marin Road, to the Harbor Commission until 1-1-2022. And then there are two other appointments. These are both to be referred to Committee on Planning and Development. Appointment 79 is Tanya Hartford, 22 Jackson Street, to the Planning Board until 1-31-2024. And Appointment 80, Andrew R. Port, 61 Water Street, Unit 5, as Director, Planning and Development, until 1-31-2021. And that is the consent agenda this evening.
Motion approved. Second. Is there a second? Second from Councilor Tontar. Discussion? Councilor Agnew?
Yeah, I'm just trying to remember what our rule is on resumes. Because I don't think they have their resumes in a packet. I mean, some of us know them already, but for the benefit of the public...
You want to talk about that? You want me to?
Go ahead.
There is a rule change, Councilor. You are correct. I don't think it has come out of committee.
It's a committee.
And it's at the request of the President, but it is not voted yet that reappointments would not have resumes, new appointments would. Am I right?
But it has not yet been...
I guess I would ask, I mean, because we're going to have a hearing on this, it would help me to have resumes. It would help me out.
Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. President. On all five?
No.
Two.
Tanya Hartford and Andrew Port.
We will, now, I will obtain those for you.
Thank you, Councilor. Further discussion?
Are you calling?
Yes.
Okay. You're just looking at me. Thank you, Council President. Just a question. I do know one of the addresses is not updated for Suzanne Cameron, so I don't know if that gets updated later. I know they're no longer on Oakland Street.
Yeah, Oakland Street is the wrong address now.
Just to be thorough.
That's right.
Just want to make sure that's corrected.
They're on Milk Street now, if I'm not mistaken, right?
Thank you for the fact checking. A flip they charge, turn it right now.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So it's done. Mayor's update, what's the rule of counsel?
Motion to receive and file.
Second. Motion to receive and file, and it's been seconded by Councilor Z. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No, it's done. Orders? Order 81. Motion to take off the table.
Second.
Motion is to take it off the table and it's been seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
It's off the table.
Is there a motion?
Oh, motion to amend.
Second.
It's seconded. Councilor Z, you want to address that motion?
Yeah. I didn't pick a specific date, but I mean, I would like to advocate for, you know, we had this debate last year about whether having two meetings, I think, in August was a good idea. I'd like to advocate for early in the year now, taking off the August 12 visit. So there's sort of like, there's a month for summer vacation and so forth. I know there's arguments pro and con, so you may not like removing a meeting, but you also may not like what I say next, which is that I've been doing a lot of thinking about, you know, some of the stuff we might talk about, but having some more flexibility to do special meetings if there's something really big coming out, it's been my opinion that, you know, if we have something that's going to, we know is going to result in, say, 90 minutes of public comment and other things, it's really hard to do more things that same night. So I kind of am thinking that we should, first of all, I think it's logical to get rid of a meeting now than to try and do it later when people have it on their calendars. Can always adamate a meeting in if we really needed it. But I think we have to figure out how to do our business in less time, both on an individual night basis, sometimes being here until 11:00 or midnight, but also, you know, and my core argument has always been that it's all about the quality of the work we put out, so we can stay here until midnight. I'm not sure the quality of the work after 11:30 is top-notch, our best work. So those are some thoughts, but, you know, and I thought, that's why I asked the table this last time, so we could kind of maybe have some of this discussion now anyways.
Point of order, so the motion is to strike August 12.
Yes. And it has been seconded by?
No, there was no second. That was...
Well, I didn't pick a date, so...
You seconded the general amendment.
I seconded the general, but I never heard, I mean, I'm not, I'm just...
Councilor Vogel, are you...
Point of order. So is that on there? Is that motion up?
Motion to amend to strike August 12, 2019.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Discussion about the amendment, please.
May I speak? I'm sorry, Mr. President. We put the July meeting, after striking the first and second meeting in July, in the middle of July. Would it not make sense to put the August meeting in the middle?
19th. The 19th, right?
19th?
That's a worthwhile suggestion.
Yeah.
It looks like that would be...
It's not a motion, but if someone would like to...
Would the honorable gentleman change it to the 19th?
He would. Where? Any fancies being called on? On that amendment?
So what's the date, please?
I think it's seven days before, right? So it's the 19th.
19th, yeah.
August 19th.
So strike the 12th and change the 26th to 19th.
Yeah.
Or strike them both and have it 19.
Any further discussion on that amendment? All those in favor of amending the schedule as amended, in accordance with what we have just discussed, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, we have one no.
I have to abstain. I don't know what you guys are talking about.
Motion to approve is amended.
Second. Motion to approve is amended and seconded by Councilor Z. If I might intrude a little bit. It's my intention for us to get together, as I said, early in February. If people have second thoughts about this, I think that might be a good time to entertain a discussion about the calendar. My own two bits. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting the schedule as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
One no. Order 82.
Order 82 is the amendment to the fees for fire department permits and services. It goes on for two pages. It's submitted by Councilor Tontar. The current fees are struck on this order and the suggested fees are not.
Motion to refer to budget and finance?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, Budget and Finance is going to meet on this on the 24th at 6:30. And we're going to be taking a hard look at this. We have some information that you have in the packet on some communities. I think I'd like to get a little more data on that and we'll take a look at these fees.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Committee items, Budget and Finance.
Motion to remove Transfer 36, Human Resources Salary for the Director, $2,000 to Human Resources Advertising, $500, and Human Resource Supplies, $1,500.
Second. Seconded by Councilor Z.
There's a motion to remove.
Oh, sorry. It's a motion to remove, yeah.
Should we vote on it?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to approve.
And seconded. Discussion? Councilor Tontar?
Yeah, the committee voted 3-0 to recommend approval. The Human Resource Department and the Payroll Department have been physically merged, which makes sense in terms of providing better service to the city's retired workers and in general. Also provides a little more privacy, I understand, to the Human Resource Department. As a result of that shift, these trans, the second transfer for supplies and also some equipment for the, for the new office on the first floor is necessary. The $500 for advertising, there are more openings, the city employees, because people are moving, so that, that money is necessary. And the money is available because the Human Resource Director left, and there was a period of time without a director, and so there's more money in that. Counselor Azid asked if there's sufficient funds in that line to continue to pay the current new director, and there are. So I recommend you vote yes.
Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No, it's done. Set up budget and finance.
That's it, Mr. President.
Education. Just announcement.
Thank you. Announcement, our next meeting is going to be Monday, February 5th, at the Senior Community Center. All are welcome. We start at 5:30, and we'll be discussing the MCAS, and we'll also have a representative there from the NEF to talk about how they did in this fall's, this fall's auction, and what their goals and fundraising events will be for 2019. So join us.
Wonderful organization. Thank you, Counselor. General Government, there's nothing in committee. License and permits.
Motion to move Communication 99.
Second. Moved and seconded, remove 99. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's out.
Motion to approve.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion. Counselor.
License and permit met on this. Everything appears to be in order. It's a repeat application, and voted 2 to 0 in approval.
Any additional discussion? No questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is done. Anything else?
Motion to remove Communication 101.
Second. 101. The third one down. Second. All those in favor of taking this out of the committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's out.
Motion approved.
Second. Moved and seconded by Counselor Vogel. Discussion. Counselor Earl.
This was also discussed, a license permit. However, there is a, we asked the clerk to confirm a certificate of insurance that's valid to this, through this year, but other than that, it's approved pending that certificate of insurance.
Further discussion. Counselor Z.
Just a quick question. Do we have a requested limit on that, or is it just that they carry any insurance, like, unlike on the races and stuff where we have a, the previous one was a $25,000 policy? Is that, do we have, just anything? Just 25?
Request.
Okay.
For this type of license.
Thank you. Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anything else?
Motion to remove Communication 102.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's out.
Motion approved.
Second. Moved and seconded by Counselor Z. Counselor Earl's.
Pretty much identical to the last one. It is pending a certificate of insurance, a $25,000. Everything else appears to be in order, and it's against, it's a reapplication. So we did approve it 2 to 0.
Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is done.
That will be it. Thank you.
Neighborhood City Services, I think, will dispense. Is there a committee member who wishes to make a report for the committee?
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you. Planning and Development.
Yes. Motion to remove Appointment 75 Jennifer Blanchet.
Second. Moved and seconded, remove Appointment 75. Out of committee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's out.
Motion to approve.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion.
Yes.
Counselor. Argument.
Committee met this evening, and we asked a few questions of Ms. Blanchet, and we were satisfied with the answers, and we recommended 3, 0, that she be reappointed through December 31st, 2020.
Very well. Further discussion. Counselor Z.
Yeah, I just wanted to use this opportunity to thank her. I've had to work with her on a few things in my ward. I don't know, I'm sure most of you have interacted with her, but she's always been very prompt and helpful, and I appreciate it. So I just thought it'd be nice to recognize that. Thank you.
No question. Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, this should be a roll call vote. Appointment. Counselor Con.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tanta.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor Earl's.
Yes.
Counselor Agarman.
Yes.
Counselor Junta.
Yes.
Counselor President Connell.
Yes.
Motion to remove.
Excuse me, Counselor Agarman. I failed to acknowledge for the public that Counselor Devlin has joined us. I apologize.
Anyway, I got stuck behind at the Alston Community Alliance. Marijuana discussion. So I got up, I told them Bruce's story about smoking weed when he was young. Now that's.
I don't envy you the drive. I'm sorry. Counselor Agarman, I apologize.
Motion to remove Ordinance 27 Zoning Map Amendment, Story Avenue.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have a motion.
Motion to amend. Motion to amend.
Second. Do we want to put it up for consideration first and then amend it, or? Motion to approve or amend?
We should put it on the floor, as they say. It's a zoning map, zoning map, entitled Zoning Map, the City New Report. Be amended pursuant to Section 3D changes such that all the parcels located within the green shaded areas of the city are changed from B1 District to Residential 2 District, as depicted on the attached map, proposed dated November 7th, 2018, jointly submitted Counselors Junta and O'Brien, and the map is attached here too. The map is dated, as I said, this map is dated November 13th, so perhaps we should change the order to say November 13th, and that's all I have.
Okay. Counselor Agarman.
Okay. I just want a point of order. Did it, did it come out of committee amended? I believe so.
It did.
Okay. Just making sure.
Why don't we have Counselor Agarman make the committee report, and then we can comment on it?
No, all good. I just.
Okay. Motion. Motion to approve as amended in committee. There we go.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Tantar. Discussion. Counselor Agarman.
Okay, so the amendment, for the record, Mr. Clark, is to strike references to Residential 2 and make it Residential 3, and then in parentheses, R3, and then instead of dated November 7th, 2018, as you said, November 13th. And maybe Andy, you could put something up on the screen while I'm talking. So you all have this handout. The way we approached it in committee, we recommended these changes unanimously, 3, 0. We took it one, one side of the street at a time. So first, we voted on the north side of Story Avenue. The, the tale there basically is that was a Chapter 40B comprehensive permit project. It's all multi-family housing, and in fact, Woodman Way is actually private property. It's open to the public, but it's, it's owned privately. So long story short, we thought that that would be appropriate to be R3 rather than R2. The yellow zones that you see, that Andy's showing you, are R2, which means two-family is allowed by special permit, but again, but you can't do multi-family, which we didn't think made any sense. We thought the character of Woodman Way was multi-family, and therefore, R3. You should know that it is possible in an R3 to do ground level commercial with residential above, and we've been working at the zoning advisory committee, which I'll talk about the end of the report, about changing all the use tables, but that's not really changing. That basic fact will remain the same. Multi-family with ground floor commercial, possible.
It's number 3.
So that came out 3, 0. One thing I want to point out is there's a driveway that's about 20 feet wide that passes directly from Story Avenue back to the L-shaped multi-family, so that driveway is actually owned in fee by whoever it is that owns that apartment building, and so that would be rezoned as residential. It's a little bit odd, because it'll be still B1 business on either side of it, but as the sponsor, cosponsored, Junta put it, he didn't really want to disturb the lot lines, because everyone, everyone was noticed on the basis of the lot line staying in symmetry with the rezoning, and the committee went along with that. So I just wanted to highlight that one little nuance. Now, the other side of the street is very much tied up with the debate that we had on marijuana retail. To refresh everyone's recollection, we have a 100-foot buffer from residential zone, so any zone that is an R zone, could be R1, could be R2, could be R3, the front door, the front door, that's to say, the door open to the public of a potential marijuana retailer must be at least 100 feet away. So just to give you the facts, the, the committee voted unanimously to recommend the blue area, which has four buildings that we believe are at least 35 years old, grand total of 96 units, and, you know, we recommend that be R3, because that is multi-family zoning. We discussed possibly rezoning the corner, which is a 7-Eleven right now, and a gas station, I think, next to it, or a service, no, what's the one in between?
Use car. Use car. Use cars.
That was not noticed. That was not noticed. So the notice that went out and the hearing that was held at the Planning Board jointly with us did not include those two parcels, so we, we're not recommending we do anything on that. But for future consideration, it might be logical, we thought, as a discussion, to make all of it R3, again, which is multi-family above commercial. Okay. Now, the next thing we did in committee was we said, all right, if we pass this rezoning and there's a 100 buffer, what does that mean practically? And the fact is, the existing front doors of the strip mall are more than 100 feet away, so you need to be aware of that. So if we enact the zoning as proposed in committee, the fact is that those storefronts, which are Chinese restaurant, Japanese restaurant, pet store, and bank on the corner, the bulb that sticks out, those would remain eligible to apply for a special permit. Doesn't mean they'll get it, but they're still eligible. However, the committee felt that there was still value to create this buffer for a couple of reasons. One is, we wanted to treat the residents of a 96-unit development, which for the report is pretty big, on equal footing with other residents in town. We felt it would be unfair. And the example, best example would be the way we dealt with Upper State Street, where on my recommendation, it's my ward, we do allow special permit applications for marijuana retail on the easterly side of the street, where the Ipswich Bank is, but not on the westerly side, because that is primarily residential. So by, so Counselor Jenta thought we should treat people here similarly. That was one argument. The other is, unlike on State Street, where those two lots have doors that face each other across State Street, that is not the case here. Here, it's back. It's the back of the building. So someday, if, if that building were ever developed, there is value in having the 100-foot buffer, because it would afford some protection to the residents behind it. So that's our recommendation, and I'd like to try it as a unified motion first. So again, we made two different recommendations. We did it, you know, one side of the street and the other, but it came out the same way. So R3 for all of these green areas is our recommendation and proposed for affirmative vote. Thank you.
So the motion is.
R3, everything in green.
R3, everything as recommended by committee.
Yeah. That's what came out of committee 3, 0.
Further discussion. Counselor Tantar.
I actually have a question. Has there been a physical measurement so that we know that 100 feet doesn't encompass the front doors of the, there has been a physical measurement?
Well, you mean like a surveyor?
Yeah. No.
No, there has not been, but I don't believe that's necessary. We could show you on the GIS, the degree of the uncertainty is, we're within that degree. We're okay. So even if there was instrumentation error, and we are off by seven feet, we're, it's going to be more. We're okay.
We took it out of the committee to the GIS.
From GIS? And you are satisfied that that?
Yeah, I think it's been accurate.
The accurate.
Further discussion. Counselor Vogel.
Sort of a related question.
You want to follow?
Not on that, but it's.
With Counselor Vogel's.
All right. Go ahead.
No, go ahead. Finish.
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 Go for it.
On State Street, what's the distance between the residences on the, on the west side of State Street to the potential marijuana shops on the east side? So State Street, what's the, what's the width? I mean, is it 100, is that 100-foot buffer there to cross that street?
I honestly don't remember.
We're going to find out.
I also don't remember.
Let's see if the planning director can shed some light on this. Andy, what have you got?
We were into a record short meeting, but no more.
So, I'm sorry. Where do you want to take the money from? The residential property?
Resident, on the west side. So basically across the street, right?
Yeah. So if you take it from those residential parcels, along the front of the parcels and the.
To say the front door. Yeah.
Yeah. So 100 feet would get you partially into the back.
So do 100. Take it to 100.
That's 100.
That's 100.
Right. So the front doors apart are less than 100.
Yeah.
Well, if I may, Mr. Ken.
There are several shops.
It isn't there.
Yeah, there is actually no.
Counselor Agarman.
Doors all face southwest.
All here. So first shop, you know, or first entrance might be with 100, but the ones at the back would.
How about further up the street?
Here? So, well, this is, so you have that one, I forget the business name, but the one business there, that one.
Dentist? Gordon rug.
Gordon rug, or the, what was, yeah. Okay.
Does that answer your question, Counselor?
Uh, yes, it does. Yeah.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes, thank you. With all due respect to that map, I'm uncomfortable with seeing it sort of taken up, you know, on the fly here on the screen, and this is a continuation of the marijuana discussion, is really what it amounts to, and whereas I understand the benefits of the R3, the potential of ground floor retail, and housing above, and all of that, I'm not comfortable with this parcel being addressed at this particular meeting. And we, the, the other side of the street, that was, been discussed for quite some time. We were going to take it up in, with the overall zoning changes and so on and so forth. This has come along really quietly, quite in response to the, to the marijuana. I think it's premature. There isn't any application. I don't, I'm not in favor of it. I, at the same argument that R3 would be beneficial in all of that, the, there's a, the same argument be, could be that the whole, that commercial would be just as effective for the community. Granted, R3 has got ground floor, commercial, and then residential up above, but both arguments could be made. If it was left business, it would be a benefit as well. I think it's restrictive to kind of just turn it around and kind of island this little section that's right in the middle of the commercial section to island it as residential. I'm uncomfortable with that. I'm going to stand opposed.
Further discussion.
Point of order.
Counselor Z. I'm sorry.
Can I ask a question before we discuss anymore?
What is the point of order? What is the point of order?
Were either of these two zones in, are they currently zoned for marijuana? Either of these two areas?
Both of them are.
They both are?
Yes.
Just to be consistent, Mr. Chair, I'm going to, I actually thought both of them were outside of it, so I'm just going to recuse myself to be consistent with my, I have filed a disclosure, I could probably participate, but just to be consistent, I'm going to recuse myself.
Councillor Khan?
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. President. I'm on the zoning advisory committee, so I just want to make sure, I know there's a lot of talk about the zoning rewrite and having everything consistently addressed. And so I guess my question is to the planning director, as well as councillor Agarwal, if this is kind of consistent with the planning, I know the table of use aspects are not going to be affected, but I definitely see the northerly side. I believe there was conversations where we did talk about that being best suited to an R3, but I don't recall the other, the section in blue as that conversation, so I just wanted to ask for clarification on that.
Mr. Port?
So the councillor is correct. The section on Woodman Way, that whole section there, was discussed in the zoning advisory committee. We've had several different meetings over the last couple of years as we work on revisions of the zoning. And that area was discussed as being changed to residential. I think the R3 is the appropriate classification for that. We did have a little bit of debate about whether to allow that to be mixed-use long-term with the idea that maybe someday those buildings might be demolished and turned into something else, but that it was consistently agreed that that should be residential. It is entirely residential neighborhood right now. The piece in the middle, though, the zoning advisory committee did not itself make a recommendation that that be changed from business. I think for the reasons that councillor Vogel had pointed out, we, you know, we were sort of of the opinion that we should leave that business district rather than having sort of a hole in that district. But we understand the current discussion of that being primarily residential and they are condos, not rentals, so it would take a lot of effort for someone to acquire that parcel and do something with it. But from a zoning perspective, the zoning advisory committee was of the opinion that we'd leave that area untouched as business.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Councillor, I thought I saw councillor Jynta's hand up and go...
You did.
Yep, absolutely.
Did you want to?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President. So we have three residential neighborhoods here that are improperly zoned, and they've been improperly zoned for a long time. Newport Condos is specifically mine. They're in Ward 5. You know, it's been said as they're, they're an island. I don't actually agree with that since they touch both the Atlantic and the Pacific, being Story Avenue and Low Street, so I don't look at it that way. What I do look at is actually the entire corner, and these are the conversations we had with the planning board and at our subcommittee meeting today, that when we look at the auto, the used auto dealer, the 7-Eleven, and even the parking lot below the 7-Eleven, you know, when you're on Facebook and you're reading about what people want to do at Kmart and they start to talk about what the future is, the future, of course, is not strip malls, it's mixed housing, it's retail on the first floor, and it's apartments upstairs. And so when I look at the future of that con, that corner, I don't see a B1. It's wrong. What I see is an R3. The entire corner should be R3. And the reason is, is because the future of 7-Eleven is not a single-story retail business. The future is a retail business that has an apartment upstairs where people can live, they can walk to the grocery store, they can buy their goods, and they can walk home with them, because that's the future. And when the mayor was here talking earlier about, you know, she was in favor of the governor's proposal for more housing. The state needs more housing. An R3 is perfect for this area because you now make a walkable, livable area that's not a strip mall. Now, when we look at the people in Newport Condos and we say, yeah, you're residential, but you don't get 100-foot buffer, that's kind of hard for them to swallow. They sent us a nice letter, their board of trustees met, and they want to be residential. And they've let us know in writing, and it's in file, it's filed here. I would be more than happy to split this and take a vote on one side, but I will say that only with one thing in mind, that I will be back in two weeks with a proposal that encompasses the entire corner at R3, because we have to stop thinking about marijuana and we really need to start thinking, what is the appropriate zoning? And I will, I'll point out another couple of things for you, just so everybody gets an idea of what's going on in this little part of town. Oleo Woods, which has been built for quite a while, was zoned industrial until this fall, and we finally fixed that. We're finally fixing the farmland. We did last year the farmland that went down Crow Lane to protect that. And now we're looking at two residential neighborhoods that are B, and because of marijuana, we're all twisted and knots over it. At some point, we might need to make a decision, what is best for the city and what is the future? Now, these residents know what their future is, and their future is R3, and that's what they want, and it's the right thing to do for them. May it take a few storefronts away from a potential pot shop? Sure it may, but the reality is, is if a pot shop comes in, they want to be where the foot traffic is, and that's at Market Basket or Shaw's. So the reality is, is to vote against this tonight because you're worried about marijuana is a disservice to the residents that live in the neighborhood. If we need to split this and do one half of it tonight and then another half in a few weeks, I'd be more than happy to do that. But I'd hate to see, I'd hate to go back to the trustees of Newport Condos tomorrow and say, sorry, you lost, you don't get to be residential for yet another two years because we proposed zoning and it lost. So that, that would be very disappointing to them. My thoughts.
Councillor Zede? Then...
I guess my comment is this. I mean, to me, this is kind of the end game of use variances, so we've done away with use variances, so hopefully we don't have to engage in this in the future. But this is a problem, is how do you confront the use variance years after it's been granted? So at some point, a decision was made to allow a 96-unit residential development, basically smack in the middle of a otherwise, probably especially at that time, highly commercialized area. So we're at the other end now, and we're confronting that reality. To me, I think R3 is a fair compromise. So I think R2, you're sort of saying, look, it's going to be residential, which probably isn't the true character of that area, but R3 seems like a reasonable compromise. It allows for commercial, it allows for residential, it gives whatever protections now and in the future an R-zone may have for any, anything. So it doesn't seem unreasonable to me. I don't think, I'm not a planner, but, you know, is there any planning textbook that would have you do this? Probably not. It doesn't make any sense. Why would you do it in the middle of a... So this is kind of the end game of those use variances, is things seem like a good idea at the time, they're granted, the development gets built, and then 10, 15, 20, 50 years later, you end up with this sort of thing. And I think we're going to be confronting this in other places, too, where differing uses have kind of crept in to zones where they weren't originally intended or envisioned. And so, again, I think R3 is a fair and reasonable compromise for this. And I also agree that practically, from my study, it doesn't seem like a massive change because you've got a 96-unit, as Director Port sort of came around a little bit, you know, there, what's going to happen? For that to change, all 96 units have to be vacated, somebody has to buy all, all the buildings. It seems highly unlikely. So I think we're looking at what will be a residential place for a long time to come. So as that stands, R3 is logical, and it would still allow for, and that same argument, by the way, was made with the joint meeting with the planning board that I attended on the other side, the north side, which seems to be less controversial, but that maybe someday there could be some first ground floor retail or something there. So I don't think it's unreasonable. It seems like a reasonable compromise, and I'm happy to support it.
Councillor Khan, and then councillor Agarwal.
Thank you. Thank you, council president. So I definitely would support the northerly part and changing that to R3. The reason I would like to see us take some time with the other portion, and I'm not saying a lot of time, but I do know as part of the zoning advisory committee, the zoning rewrite is in place right now, and we are looking at the entire city, and there might be other examples like this. So I don't see a need to rush through it tonight, and so I think it would be really helpful to take time and to look through other similar situations so that we're being somewhat consistent and not setting a precedent, and we're being kind of holistic in how we're looking at the whole zoning considerations and similar examples like this. So I would support the northerly side, changing that to R3, but I could not support the other side because I just don't see the hurry for it right now, and it would be nice to look at it comprehensively and be part of the rewrite process. Thank you.
Councillor Agarwal?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that when we advertised this, we did advertise an alternative to the rezoning for this particular parcel, the 96 units where you could just put the 100-foot buffer on it. But again, that, we already calculated the only, that would, that might affect the 7-Eleven, but it wouldn't affect the shopping center because those storefronts are more than 100 feet away. So that's one thing you could do. What I would recommend is, I made the motion to do it together. I really do want to keep momentum, so I guess, who was the second? Were you the second? Who was the second on my mind?
Councillor Tantar, I've got.
Maybe I could, I could, maybe take it in pieces. Why don't we have the vote on north of the street? I'd like to do that, if my second would be willing to do that.
I'm willing to do that.
Okay, so I would move to rezone the green areas north of Story Avenue to R3 and reference the map dated November 13.
Second.
Okay. Discussion on this amendment? Discussion on the amendment, none?
Just point of order, so just that side we were talking about.
Just the north side.
If I might...
It's not, it's not an amendment, though, correct?
It's not an amendment.
It's to approve it.
I was the second to withdraw.
You're modifying your original motion, correct?
Take it one at a time, yeah.
So this would be a roll call vote, then?
It will be. If I could recite it, just for the record, so this is still the map referenced, November 13th, we're changing R2 to R3. And the councillor from Ward 2 has stated that it's only with respect to that area north of Route 113 to be rezoned as R3.
Correct.
The two areas in green north of Story Ave, probably the...
All areas.
All areas.
All two.
That are, all areas on the map that are green north of Route 113.
So does everyone know what we're voting on? Are there any questions about that? Then let's take a roll call vote on that motion.
Just so I get that, so it's seconded...
By councillor Tantar.
Councillor Khan?
Yes.
Councillor Shan?
Yes.
Councillor Tantar?
Yes.
Councillor Vogel?
Yes.
Councillor Zede?
Yes.
Councillor Devlin has recused himself. Councillor Earls?
Yes.
Councillor Agarwal?
Yes.
Councillor Jynta?
Yes.
Councillor Connell?
Yes.
Needing eight, receiving nine, motion passes.
Is there anything else in the committee? Councillor Agarwal?
Yeah, I would move to refer the remainder of the proposal back to committee.
Second. And second, discussion. Councillor Tantar?
Just because you said you might take it out in two weeks, you made reference to the planning board, so did the planning board review this and make a recommendation?
Yes.
Can we get a report on it, what they recommended?
Sure, but I don't remember what it was.
Councillor Jynta?
They recommended that it stay B, but they also recommended that it get 100-foot buffer zone.
Got you. Thank you.
Yep. Now, as a, as a point of clarification in terms of the procedure from this point forward, if this goes back to committee, it's been substantially modified, you're going to have to post it again, go back to the planning board before it comes out again?
Yeah, if we add the 7-Eleven and the, and the car, used car, yeah, it has to go back to the planning board.
That's my understanding. Thank you. So the motion is to recommit the remainder of the original proposal to the committee on planning and development. Do I understand that correctly?
That's correct.
All right. Does everyone understand that?
I know who moved. The second was councillor. Thank you.
Will this require a roll call?
I would do one because it's an ordinance, zoning.
So a roll call on this matter now.
Motion to refer back in part. Councillor Khan?
Yes.
Councillor Shan?
Yes.
Councillor Tantar?
Yes.
Councillor Vogel?
Yes.
Councillor Zede?
Yes.
Councillor Devlin?
Yes.
Recused councillor Earls?
Yes.
Councillor Agarwal?
Yes.
Councillor Jynta?
Yes.
Councillor Connell?
Yes.
And so is backing committee. Anything else from planning and development?
Yes, I'd like to yield the floor and the mic to Andy Port to give us a rundown of where we are on the zoning advisory committee. I've missed some meetings, for example. Councillor Khan has been there more recently. What I'm mostly interested in his telling us is timing of when things are coming out. For example, we've had the use tables on the shelf since around Labor Day, so how about...
So the end of this month, the last couple of weeks, Courtney Starling and I, she's the consultant from our consultant cog, will be posting the drafts of the sections we've worked on so far, so that these are really the core sections of the zoning ordinance, primarily the use table, the zoning map, and so forth. Some definitions, some administrative sections, posting those online, having a series of public meetings to vet them, to get public feedback on them, in addition to any feedback we get, you know, through the website. We'll be having some additional meetings with the planning board and others to get feedbacks on repeal, et cetera. We're looking for your feedback, obviously, in the general public's feedback, and then we'll be rolling into the other sections as we go along from the spring to the summer, finishing the remaining sections. A lot of that has to do with overlay districts or things that are sort of unique to one area of the city or another, as opposed to the overall ordinance. So the big chunk of it, you know, has been drafted, now we need to get public feedback on those things, and we'll be doing that via the website, via public meetings, and more outreach to folks.
Why don't you stay at the mic, Andy, in case there are questions?
Yeah, well, first question is, so are the use tables and dimension, dimensional tables going to come together?
Yes, our intent is to bring those together. We're actually, right now, we're looking over, there's a, there's some documentation that will be provided to you in the form of what we're calling district plates, and those district plates are essentially an illustration of, for dimensional requirements in particular, why we're recommending some dimensional requirements be changed or consolidated. And so you'll see, you know, illustrative examples within a certain ward, or within a certain district, a representative block, and we'll show you why the dimensions that exist today, for instance, might, out of the ordinance, are more restrictive, let's say, than what is actually on the ground in these neighborhoods. So in some instances, we're recommending we tweak those dimension requirements. They're not substantial, I wouldn't say, but in a few areas, tweaking them so that they actually represent more accurately what's going on in the neighborhoods.
I just want the uses and the dimensions to come together because there's like a nexus between the two that, you know, you can't talk about a use unless you also know the dimension. So that was my first question.
Yes, agreed.
The second one is, the meetings that you're planning to hold, you will be holding in the office of planning and development, or the planning and development committee, or cog, or some combination of all of those?
Yep, so our office with the communities opportunities group, our consultant, and the zoning advisory committee will have to discuss what sort of representation would make sense, given the large, like, for instance, we have nine members on the planning board, what kind of representation will come from there, I presume the chair, vice chair, and so forth. But we'll have it be the zoning advisory committee, our office, and the consultant doing the presentation or background for the meetings, and then we'll welcome participation by others as they desire.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Councillor Tantar?
Miss, when did you think you were going to post this?
Before the end of this month, so we're actually...
Before the end of January.